We're going to call the meeting to order at 5:30. First on the agenda is the 2023-2024 budget and proposed tax rate.
I know that we have Scott that's going to give some information and he has a presentation, so we're loading this up.
All right. Good evening, Board members. Dr. Ball. It is my pleasure to present the 2023-24 proposed budget. Tonight is a public hearing, and at this time, we will not take any action until later on tonight. Tonight, we will review the three budgets: general fund, child nutrition, and interest in seeking, as well as review the tax rates, and then go over the potential fund balance. As you all know, the budget is the requirement of every school district, and TEA requires the budget to be adopted prior to the start of the new fiscal year. So we are early tonight. That's good. All right. Budget assumptions: these are the items that we have been looking at over the course of the summer, and these are the items that we use to help write the budget. As you can see, they are pretty much the same items all summer. We have the 13,905 students that we projected the budget to be based on. And I would like to draw your attention to the last bullet point there: the ADA enrollment, increased allotment, and incentive. The board and the superintendent have made a push to try to help increase enrollment this year and attendance, and by doing so, we've added $1 million to the budget to help that endeavor. All right. This slide, we have the revenue that we'll be using tonight for the budget projection. It's approximately $153 million, and most of it is made up of state and local revenue. Our expenditures, on the other hand, are $165 million, with the majority of our expenditures in the personnel section. So about 80, almost 83% of our budget is salaries. All right. Here we have the general fund, the budget we've been presenting all summer. And below that, we have the general fund budget, and we've added the $3.3 million in rollover expenditures for a grand total of $168 million, with the deficit of $15.6 million. So we will be asking for the board to approve the general fund proposed budget with the rollover POs in there. So basically, it's the budget we've been presenting all summer, plus the rollover POs, or items that we weren't able to purchase this year for these various reasons right here. And this is the full list of the rollover purchase orders. That's a total of $3.3 million. This is the total expenditures of $165 million, not including the rollovers, and you can see the various functions and the percentage towards those costs. Most of our budget is towards instruction, and everything in the budget is used to support instruction. This is the same budget, but by object code. And as you can see, the majority of our payroll, again, is in the payroll. Majority of our funding is in the payroll object code. Within our budget, we have the campus budgets. And here's a list of all the campus budgets with payroll allocations. This is based on the 13,905 students. And you can see a cost per student. We also have our department budgets. In the next couple of slides, we deal with the department budgets and their allocations along with the payroll as well. Any questions on the general fund budget so far? All right. All right, now we will discuss the child nutrition budget and the debt service budget. All right. On the child nutrition budget, we are asking the board to adopt a $13 million revenue budget with $15 million in expenses for a total deficit of $2 million. The deficit is due to the fund balance expenditures that child nutrition is required to spend in order to get them to below the three-month average. And so they have a plan that they are utilizing. And they will be purchasing steam tables, freezers, and all kinds of good stuff this year. Debt service budget. This is probably the easiest budget we have. It's based on the INS revenue. And we are looking to generate $29 million in order to pay our $29 million bond payment. There we go. All right. This slide shows all the budgets together. This is what we will post on the Internet after the budget is approved. As you can see, we have the general fund, the child nutrition, the debt services budget all right there on one page. And this does include the rollover POs in there as well. So this is the one we would like to approve later on tonight. All right. Now we head into part two, tax rate. We'll be looking to talk about the maintenance and operation tax, as well as our interest in seeking tax. All right. You'll notice I took a couple of pages out of the slideshow here. One on your desk has two pages, so just forward that page. We'll move on. We made an executive decision. We'd already discussed those last week. All right, so here we are on the tax rate. This is the same slide from last time. You can see our tax rate. We are recommending the same tax rates of .724 for the MNO and .4381 for the INS for a total of $116.21. And as you can see on the right, this will be a significant decrease from the tax rates of previous years. Lastly, we have our fund balance review. We've talked about three different budgets that will be approved later on tonight. We have the general fund, child nutrition, and debt service. Board policy CE Local has us maintain at least a three-month fund balance for the general fund, as well as a 10%. And our fund balance for debt services needs to be 10% of the projected payment from the previous year. We are well within those parameters with the budget that we are presenting tonight. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Scott. Board members, do you have any questions? No? Okay. How about public comments? Anybody sign up for anybody who wanted to make a question? What?
He has a question.
Okay.
On the $15 million deficit, how are we going to try to recover that to get it back to where we need to be at?
I know that Brendan will like to share some things. But a couple of things. We have been working really hard on our attendance. Our student attendance has been a focus. Our enrollment has been a focus also. And then we're looking at everything that we do in regards to program staff and making sure that we're always working efficiently to maximize the dollars that we do have. And then Brendan, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Just really on the, you're seeing a $15 million, but $3 million is already money that we assigned for fund balance to cover, so it's really like a 12. We have a host of vacancies, and our enrollment is increasing. So we're hoping with the ADA, the enrollment increases, that will continue to kind of beat down that deficit. And really, to be honestly truthful, most districts are hopefully in state. Two years from now, or maybe in a special session, to help us deal with our deficits. Right now, we're leveraging what we have and our resources. And we used ESER to kind of put money in the fund balance because we knew we were going to have this problem. Here in a couple of years, hopefully, we can find our way back to a balanced budget. So that would be the goal.
And what is the ADA right now at where we are trying to meet for the budget?
Currently, based on this budget, if we could get an ADA of 90%, 12, 450, that would meet our revenue. Anything better than that, obviously, would get more revenue. And so that's kind of our goal, is to push attendance to get it above that 90%. But we know we've been steadily, since COVID, getting that back to the normal 94. So it may go up to 94%, but that would add a lot of revenue if we keep it to that point. That's kind of the goal around the year.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, we're going to close the meeting at 5:41. And a call to meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Dr. Ball?
Yes, Roger will be leading us in our invocation pledges.
Lord, as we begin our meeting, we declare that your purposes will prevail. We ask you to give us wisdom, patience, and guidance as we plan for the future. Help us to respect one another and work together. We give you the glory for everything that is accomplished. Bless all our endeavors, especially today's meeting. Guide us in our discussions and line our minds in every decision that we make. Give us your grace that we may effectively do our parts as public servants. Bless our plans, programs, and projects so that we may achieve our objectives for your greater glory. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Okay, so item, first item on the agenda. Do you have anybody signed up for public comments?
No, ma'am.
Consider approval of the 2022-2023 final budget amendment.
Yes, we are asking the board to approve the items that Scott presented previous. No?
This is so this year's budget? This is the sheet here. And this will be, I have to fix all the functions, make sure we're balanced. We can't spend more money than we have in the function. So me and Scott have worked on this. So we're asking you all to approve the final budget amendment for this previous year's budget.
Yes. So this is the final budget amendment for the 2022-2023. I move.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Do you have any questions, Board members? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Motion carries. Consider approval of the 2023-2024 district budget.
Now, that one is the one that Scott just presented.
Okay, Board members, you heard the presentation earlier. Are there any questions? If not, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the 2023-24 district budget as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Motion carries. Consider approval of the 2023 certified appraisal rule.
Brendan, do you have anything to share?
So every year, we get our certified values in July on the 25th. This year is a little different. So we received certified values with the 440,000 homestead, and then they released a supplement for the 100,000 homestead. So we're asking the board to approve the certified values. They didn't tell us which one we have to approve, so we're approving both of them.
Okay.
The original on the 25th, and then the supplement with the 100,000. And so tonight, we're asking the board to approve our certified values, appraisal rule.
Board members, any questions?
I move that we approve to accept the certified and supplemental appraisal rule tax for year 2023 for as recommended.
We have a first, Mr. Gonzalez second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of a no-new revenue tax rate and voter-approved tax rate.
Yes, so before we can adopt our tax rate, we have to approve the no-new revenue rate, which is a rate that would be equal to what we would raise in revenue from last year. So our values went up, so that rate would be a lot lower. So you have to approve that one, and then you have to approve a voter approval tax rate. And that basically says if you can't set a tax rate higher than this rate, if you do, then you need to go out and get the voters to approve that. So we're asking the board to approve the no-new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate.
Okay. Board members, you need a motion?
I move to accept a no-new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate for tax year 2023-2024 for Sato Cinco District.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. This item, Board members, there's a special motion, and Daniel will read it if we choose to approve this. Consider approval of a resolution setting the tax rate for the '23-24 tax year.
I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.162100, which is effectively a 6.70% increase in the tax rate.
A second.
Okay. Can you read that again?
I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.162100, which is effectively a 6.70% increase in the tax rate.
The language that you always have to say that it's actually increasing taxes, but it's really not. Once we, the homestead and with our, if you use, without the homestead, you set that tax rate, if you use appraisal values, then it would actually increase taxes. But since we have the homestead and all the acts, you just have to say per language. Every year, I think you ask the same question, like, why are we saying it's increasing when it's actually going down?
Well, I'm just remembering what's his name was showing us just a few minutes ago. Scott?
Yeah, it compresses down, but it's... It's compressing down, and they're getting the homestead, so they're actually going to pay less taxes. But we have to by law, in the language, after we do truth in taxation, say that we're increasing the tax rate.
I won't ask next year. I'm sorry.
So everybody's taxes should...
I'm asking the question that probably the community is going to ask.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, we have the motion.
I'll second.
Joe, second. If there's no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Carries. Consider approval of property casualty and liability insurance.
Yes, and Brendan has this one also. You'll notice that it's a significant increase. So Brendan, you have...
There's a couple, well, one is, I know Thomas isn't here. We've been valuing our values of our buildings based on previous values. Everybody knows values are going up. So now that, if we ever had a catastrophic event, hopefully we don't, how, what would it cost to rebuild? And so we had to adjust our numbers that we were sending our agent. So that was a huge increase in our, just like your house going up in value, and if you ever want to build a new home on your place, it's going to cost you more to do that these days. And so that's what the insurance company said. They would not bid our property if we did not increase the values of our current facilities. So that was a major increase. And then we've added a lot of buses, some fleet vehicles, newer ones. So coming with newer vehicles, just like a new vehicle, you're going to pay more in premiums. And we had some, you know, issues last year with, you know, bus accidents and things. So a lot of the increases are coming from property and automobile. And so we're recommending the board to approve the purchase of property casualty and liability insurance from Frost, our agent, of 2.815072.
Yeah, we went to a session at, I think it was the winter governance or summer, it was one of those. But they were talking about the hail, the hail damage. That it was just, the rates just were going to be astronomical.
Correct.
For everybody. It's just really, really high.
And it proved correct because it's almost 100% increase.
That's what they were saying. Okay, I need a motion.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Daniel, second. Any questions, Board members? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of an increase in district mileage rate.
Yes, this is, as the state increases their rate, we're asking the board to increase it for 65 cents so we can compensate our employees that do travel.
Okay.
I move.
My second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Did you get those, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of a contract for district vehicle GPS software.
Yes, we've had the software for a couple of years now. And it previously has been under 50,000. But this year, we, like I said, we've added some new buses and added some police vehicles. So it's going to take us over the 50,000 threshold. And so that's what we're bringing to the board to approve the contract agreement with the GPS system for an annual cost of $55,300.
We can't just use Google Maps?
Well, Google doesn't let us track our vehicles.
Oh, okay, you mean that.
It's for our buses and our fleet.
I'm just kidding, Brendan.
That bus tracking software.
I was just kidding, Brendan. Okay, we need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Joe makes the motion. Hello, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of a designated non-business days for Texas Public Information Acts.
Yes, Ms. Collier is going to handle this one. And basically, now the law is asking us to stipulate which ones are our non-business days. So we've been working on this, so I know that Jenny's going to present this.
While he's pulling up the presentation. So House Bill 33, good evening, everyone, first. House Bill 33 amends the Public Information Act by limiting the number of non-business days for school districts. So prior to this amendment, even if we were, we had 10 days to fulfill Public Information Act request. But when we had a holiday, or state holiday, or federal holidays, that put a pause on the 10-day deadline. This new legislation is going to obviously reduce our response time for PIA requests when we're closed. So with this new legislation, Southwest ISD has to designate 10 non-business days per calendar year. So it's not for the school year, it's for the calendar year. This new law takes effect on September 1st, 2023. So I work closely with business and human resources. Those are the ones that get the most requests. So I worked with them on which would work best. The good news is that we have 10 days for the rest of 2023 that we must designate, and then 10 days for 2024. So those are the recommended dates. It gives us a little bit of leeway during the longer break times like Christmas and Thanksgiving. So you'll see there that I went ahead and designated those days. And we'll have to do this every year. And that is it. Do you all have any questions?
Does that mean that people are going to have to come in?
So that's what we're trying to avoid. So like when we have Labor Day weekend, we want to get a request. If it was due, we'd have to make sure that it's, we fulfill that request before we go on a three-day weekend. But like with Christmas, I mean, Thanksgiving, we have the federal holidays included, and then we designated some days. You go back there so that it gives us some time. I've made it so that we have enough time that at least we know going in, we'll have a couple of days coming back from the break.
Okay, and some of those are very time, some of those requests are very time-consuming.
Yes, yes. We're working on one right now that's very timely. So that, and I've just known that a lot of times, a pause in the clock, if it's going to take extra manpower and hours to like dig up the information, we send them a cost estimate. This is how much it costs, and that also puts a pause.
Oh, okay.
So if it was that difficult, we reach out to our attorneys. I work with the staff, and then we get a cost estimate. And that puts a pause until they answer yes or no to proceed with the request.
Oh, okay. Board members, do you have any questions? If not, I need a motion.
I move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of utility connections for portables at Spicewood Park Elementary.
We have Thomas, who's going to share information.
Yes, ma'am. So in July of 2023, the district purchased six portables. Four of those portables were put at Spicewood Elementary to anticipate, for the anticipated growth that Ms. Velazquez is going to have there at that school. We bid out the utility connections, which is water, sewer, and electricity connections for those portables that we didn't already have. We bid that out to our pre-approved small general contractor group. We got five bids back on that project, and Dodson House Moving San Antonio was the low bidder on this project in the amount of $164,986.72. So the district staff is recommending that we award that contract to DMHSA for that contract amount. This includes the fencing for the safety portion, sidewalks that still needed to be extended, then all of the water connections, sewer connection, and the power connection. The only thing that they are not handling is the meter pole coming in from CPS, which we're, that's going to be the holdup because we're kind of working with CPS, and it's just ongoing with the way transformers are coming right now. So as soon as we can get them up and running, we will. But we're ready to turn them loose to do all the utility connections, and all we'd be waiting on is the CPS power.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at to get those ready?
CPS power is the problem.
Right.
We are shooting for, to hopefully have the CPS power in by November. But we haven't gotten an official word from them. And this portion will be done, they'll be done long before that. I would think that they're probably going to be done by the end of September.
Oh, good, okay.
It would just be a matter of waiting on CPS to bring us the power.
Board members, any questions or motion?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider award of fire alarm for the Spicewood Park Elementary portables.
Yes, ma'am, this is same scenario. We did not add this in to try and make it a little bit cheaper on the district, not paying the premiums. We already have a relationship and a contract with FACS because that's the fire alarm system that we have there. So we are hiring them directly to put in fire alarm and get it from the existing building out to those portables as required by the city of San Antonio. So district staff has recommended that we use fire alarm control systems for the amount of $104,450. That, extending all of the, adding to the panel, extending the lines that needed to be extended in addition to two power poles that we needed to put in to allow us to get over the top of where the child nutrition deliveries are at. So we had to go above ground on that one, so that's part of that fee. So then, the last one, the other part of that is we will be taking the data lines out, but that contract did not exceed the $50,000 mark. So we're already moving forward with that one.
Okay. Board members? Daniel makes the motion.
I'll second.
Joe, we'll give it to Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of TASB board policy update 121 legal and local.
Yes, we have Ms. Barcenas that's been working on these policies.
So you were given a first read at the last board meeting, so you had the opportunity to take a look at the TASB board policy updates 121. You'll notice that on there, it was things that change with the legal legislation, which changes our practices here. Everything from DOI, ad valorem tax, how we do that, food nutrition technology, state testing, bullying reporting, and access to information, which you just kind of heard Jenny talk about. So did we have any questions on any of those? Then we would ask for approval on the TASB update 121 as presented at first read.
Okay.
I move.
My second.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Barcenas? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Consider approval of EIE, EIA, and CDA for local policy.
Also, Ms. Barcenas has this one.
I love policy. And so these were some local policies that we would like to ensure align with the practices that are being presented and asked for by our stakeholders, our teachers, and our campuses. EIA was basically to align the grading periods with our new academic calendar to ensure that elementary parents knew when the report cards were coming. EIA, I'm sorry, EIE was the promotion and retention of, is a promotion retention, but it's for first graders and second graders to receive numeric grades instead of letter grades. The ES, and you, that you may remember from your childhood, this would actually be numeric. And so they would receive that. And then CDA is for revenue and investments. And Mr. Chris explained that during the first read from last time.
It says on the first two, it says EIA on both of those.
I know, it should be an EIE. I just corrected that on my paper.
Mine says EIE. Okay, Board members, any, I need a motion.
I move.
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Barcenas? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any items of information?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. So before we go to closed session, Dr. Ball, one more thing?
Yes, I'd really like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. James Gonzalez. Last Friday, we had our first football game, and Mr. Gonzalez is now volunteering his time to be our announcer, and does a superb job. So really want to thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for taking the time to do this for us, and specifically for volunteering. Thank you so much for that. We appreciate you. That's all I have, ma'am.
All right. Okay, so we'll be going into closed session as permitted by Section 551.001-551.146 of the Texas Government Code, the open meetings law at, sorry, 619. We're going to go back into session at 7:33, and we're going to the superintendent's recommendation on personnel.
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation on personnel.
A second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, motion carried. Dr. Ball?
Yes, I would like to thank Will Baker. Today is his last board meeting with us, and I'd like to thank him for all his hard work for the district, and wish you all the best.
Well, we're going to miss you, Will. Is that it?
That's it.[1795.87]